I'd like to call this meeting of the Wensaker City Council to order for Monday, December 20th, 2021. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Conoyar.
Here.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Gillette. Councilwoman Sierra.
Here.
Councilwoman Susie.
Here.
Councilwoman Ward.
Here.
President Gendron.
Here. Could you please stand for the prayer and the pledge?
God our Father, we ask that you send your blessing upon this city and upon this council. Guide us in our efforts, increase our motivation, and strengthen our resolve to build a better community and ensure a brighter future for the city of Wensaker. This we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I would just like to make everyone aware, if anyone's listening on the radio or stream, we are streaming live. There is a cable problem and Jacob's Sound and Video is here recording, but there is a Cox communication problem and they're having trouble connecting. So if you are attempting to stream this over Cox Communication or Verizon, that system is down right now, but the live stream on the internet is working and of course, W O O N is broadcasting this meeting live as well. So I apologize for any inconvenience. It will be recorded and provided to Cox tomorrow for the replay as normal procedure. First item on the agenda is public hearings.
21 L C 53, public hearing on transfer application of first-class victualling license from Pacific Asian Cuisine to Guo Ling Inc., Pacific Asian Cuisine at 63 Cumberland Street.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against this transfer application? Hearing none, Madam Clerk. Next item.
21 L C 54, public hearing on transfer application of Class A liquor license from City Streets Liquor, Inc., doing business as City Streets Liquor, to Gurau Dev City LLC, doing business as City Streets Liquor at 61 Hamlet Avenue.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against this transfer application? Hearing none, I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilman Susie, to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to the agenda for Board of Licensed Commissioners.
21 L C 53, 21 L C 53, application on transfer of first-class victualling license from Pacific Asian Cuisine to Guo Lin Inc., Pacific Asian Cuisine at 63 Cumberland Street.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilwoman Sierra, seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And 21 L C 53 is approved, five to zero.
21 L C 54, application on transfer of Class A liquor license from City Streets Liquor, Inc., doing business as City Streets Liquor, to Guru Guru Gurudev City LLC, doing business as City Streets Liquor at 61 Hamlet Avenue.
Motion to move. Motion made by Councilman Susie.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments?
Council President.
Councilman Conoyar.
I think we received a communication objecting to this transfer due to some monies owed. Solicitor, did you receive a copy of that from a Mr., from Sinapi Law Associates?
Yes, I did. You're talking about, which license are you talking about? The City Streets Liquor?
Yes.
Yes, that's 61 Hamlet Ave.
Yep. Your question to me, Counselor?
I just wanted to know if you received it and have we received any further communication?
I haven't received any further communication.
We did receive a, another communication today in support from McGlaughlin and Moran.
Yeah.
Can I see that?
Yes.
Now, I had a question, Solicitor. If you look at, I'm sorry, Councilman Conoyar. Yeah, no, go ahead. In the notice that we received from Sinapi Law Associates, the letter is signed by Gregory Mancini and then he, it seems like it's Mancini Beverages, but is he a principal at Sinapi Laws?
No, I, I think Mancini is affiliated with the distributor.
Then why is he signing a letter on Sinapi Law Associates letterhead?
I'm trying to find that. Do I have that in my packet?
It was emailed to you, Solicitor?
It was emailed a few days ago. Back on December 17th.
McGlaughlin and Moran's letter?
No.
No, that was today.
That was today.
So then, there is a Mancini who is affiliated with, so it must be from Mancini Beverage, I would imagine, but I don't know Gregory Mancini, but I know that company. But in either case, he's, he's representing, you know, the two people who are involved in this letter, the two debtors.
So do you know a Gregory Mancini to be associated with Sinapi Law Associates?
No, I know Dick Sinapi.
It just seemed odd that-
According to their website, he is.
Oh, he is?
He is?
Okay.
Yeah. Because there are a few, and there's one Mancini who's actually affiliated with one of the distributors. It's probably Mancini Beverage, but.
Mr. President, could I?
Councilman Susie.
Just a question. Is there a precedent when someone owes monies outstanding? Does that prohibit a transfer? It does, so it's automatic. It's, okay.
Yes.
Until that's resolved, right?
Should we deny or table? I would table it unless we've received a letter today that it's been satisfied.
Okay.
I, I didn't, I saw the one today from McGlaughlin and Moran.
Yeah, that's not the subject of this letter, though.
No, no, this is, this is Horizon. I think out of an abundance of caution, we should continue this until the next meeting.
Okay.
And then, and then we'll go from there. Neither Mr. Mancini nor Mr. Sinapi has called me as the solicitor regarding this account.
Need a motion?
We need a motion to table. Motion made by Councilman Susie, seconded by Councilman Ward to table 21 L C 54. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And 21 L C 54 is tabled until further notice.
21 L C 55, application of licenses and renewal of licenses.
Council President.
Councilman Ward.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman-
New licenses for holiday and tobacco and renewals for police constable, quarterly entertainment, victualling first class and victualling second class licenses.
Motion made by Councilman Ward.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Conoyar to approve 21 L C 55. Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And 21 L C 55 is approved, five to zero. Public comment. I would ask if there's anyone here that would like to address the city council, that you please approach the podium, adjust the microphone so that we can hear you, speak clearly into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to under five minutes and obviously in good taste. Is there anyone here that would like to address the city council? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I would ask, before we get into receiving the consent agenda, there's been a request by the Director of Public Works, who I think will be back shortly, to take out 21 C O 107 to be discussed at tonight's meeting. So whoever makes the motion on the consent agenda, if you could exclude 21 C O 107.
Motion to approve-
Motion made by Councilman Ward.
Consent agenda is submitted except for 21 C O 107.
Motion made by Councilman Ward.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sierra. Are there any other items to be taken up separate from the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And the consent agenda is approved, five to zero, with the exception of 21 C O 107. While we wait for the-
Make a motion to approve the minutes-
Thank you.
-of the meeting of 12:06, 2021.
Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilwoman Sierra. To approve the minutes of the regular meeting held December 6, 2021, are there any changes or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And the minutes from the December 6, 2021 city council meeting are approved, five to zero as presented. We will hold 21 C O 107 and while we wait for the Director of Public Works, Madam Clerk, we'll go on to presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrances.
21 P 23, request of Police Chief and Public Safety Director to address the city council regarding the Flock camera system.
Chief, I believe you are Public Safety Director Gillette, okay? Chief Oats.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for allowing me to address you on this. As you know, we went back in late August into early September with a trial run with 13 cameras from Flock, Flock Safety. I briefed two folks on that, what our intent, what the plan was. It was a trial period to see what would come out. So I'm back reporting here today. I'm very satisfied with the camera program. During the course of the program, there were six individuals arrested with stolen, six individuals arrested in possession with stolen vehicles. One of those individuals arrested, these were all six separate incidents, was a 14-year-old boy who was a runaway, who was actually in the process of regassing the car up at the Cumberland Farms on, on South Main Street when we apprehended him after a brief foot chase. But because of locating him and out of the vehicle, there was no, there was no car chase involved. Out of those six stolen cars, also two of the individuals in those stolen cars were wanted for other various offenses. We had an arrest for a vehicle that had stolen plates. One of those arrests also, we just happened over this past weekend, we had a chase on the night of December 7th where we spotted the cameras hit, that the vehicle was in the city. Officers tried to make a traffic stop. There was a pursuit. The vehicle got away, but Sergeant Mortensen was able to ID the operator of the vehicle because Warwick, who had the warrant out for the stolen vehicle, believed they knew the operator, which was a Grundy, individual by the name of Grundy. So we were able to draw an arrest warrant for him. Mr. Grundy was involved in a pursuit again last night in the city of, that started in, out of the city of Providence, where he allegedly had a fire, had a firearm and was involved in a firearm incident. That went through multiple communities and he ultimately blew the two tires on the vehicle and was apprehended in Warwick by them. So it's another example of, you know, to the point that these people that are in vehicles, they're, they're doing more than a stolen vehicle. They're carrying firearms. What was he doing in the city of Wensaker that night that we chased him out of this, out of our city? What was his purpose here? He was here to commit crime is what he was here for. There's four other police departments right now in the state that are using Flock. That's us, Cranston, Pawtucket, Gloucester PD, believe it or not, has come on with two, Tiverton's come on with two. And I anticipate within the next 30 days, there'll be 60 to 70 more cameras. From my understanding, the state police are getting 25 for the highway system. Warwick's getting, Warwick's getting cameras, so is East Providence. And we all share those feeds. So anything that we put in our system or anything that we looking for, we're able to, to go back and forth with them. The cameras have been helpful in very, in several various criminal investigations. The cameras are used on a daily basis by the narcotics officers for their investigation and have been very helpful in identifying individuals moving drugs throughout the city during the evening hours and even early morning, early morning hours. Internal Affairs, even though the model for the best, for a best policy is ordered once a year yearly, our Internal Affairs audits the use of these cameras every 30 days to ensure that anyone using these cameras are in compliance with the policy that we have. Over the last 30 days, the cameras hit on 195,000 vehicles. There were 536 positive hits out of that, which we filtered down to some of them turned out to be not, where it's a Rhode Island plate opposed to a mass plate that's stolen and that. And in the last 30 days, we did 83 searches. The cost per cameras, as I initially stated, was $2,500 a camera with a one-time $250 installation fee. From speaking with Flock, who the representative was, had planned on being here tonight with me, but he came in close contact with someone with COVID, so was quarantined as a result. He assured me that if anyone has any further questions or any more questions that I can answer from the Flock end, he'd be happy to communicate that with them. But they're willing to even waive now if we continue with this, this system for the cameras that I have in place, the $250 installation fee. I may move some of those cameras, though, because one of the things that Flock did, because we had problems getting electrical hookup, they can do a solar, a solar power source, but obviously they weren't going to make a big investment in that if we weren't going to keep the cam, if we weren't going to keep the cameras. So if I choose to move some of these cameras, there would be a $250, but anything that I leave in place would be, would be good, what would be good right now. The trial actually did end back in November, but Flock allowed the system and has allowed the system to continue to run at no cost, which is a result of what we just had this weekend. They also have the technology on their camera system in the future, if we want, of gunshot capability, identifying gunshot sounds. I know ShotSpotter was, is a very expensive system that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars, but their technology and their cameras is going to allow us to potentially expand if that, if we wanted to look at what that would be. So I mean, my overall opinion, and then I'll defer to the director, is I think it's a great public safety tool. It's a force multiplier. I have not heard any negative comment from any, anyone other than that initial letter from the American Civil Liberties Union who raised the concerns that they sent to you folks. But as I said to you back then, if they had had a legal leg to stand on, they wouldn't be sending you a letter. They'd be sending me a summons to appear in federal court to block the use of the cameras. So I just think for the amount of money, amount of money involved and just for the short period of time that we've used it, you know, just that, that 14-year-old gassing that car, what was he going to do that night? That's just an accident. And I mean, and even, you know, not that he'd be involved in a serious crime, but potentially hurting himself or hurting someone, someone else. So what do we prevent by, by that? And then just even all these vehicles and the, the last individual that was arrested on, on Saturday night had assaulted his ex, had assaulted his ex-girlfriend's sister and was in the stolen vehicle and violently fought with, violently fought with us. As a result, he was charged with numerous counts of felony assault on police officers, as well as the offenses related to the stolen vehicle. And he was back in the area of the woman who he assaulted. So was he going back to reassault? So what did we prevent there? So with that being said, I just think that it's, it's a good system, especially for the amount of money. There's no other system like it. They are sole, they are sole source vendor. I mailed you, emailed you different information that explains that. These other departments that, that are in the state, they're all going with them. It would not make any sense to jump into my own camera system, even if there was something, when I've got 70 other cameras that are in the state, not counting nearby Massachusetts. So I truly support this and I would like to, to look for any help from, that the council may have as, as far as a funding source until I get into my next budget year.
How many cameras do we have in use right now?
13.
And it's 2,500 a year?
2,500 a year, and that includes all, they, they come out daily. If there's any problems with the camera, they do all the maintenance, they do all the software update, they do all the repairs. We're basically leasing the camera. And we can enter into one-year contract. I know if we were going to enter into a multi-year contract, that's going to need council approval, but for this year, I would say we would go with a one-year contract and again, look at it. And even with that, if I decide at any point to walk away from it, it's all pro, it's all prorated. So, and I don't see a reason why I would walk away from it, but there is that escape, there is that escape clause.
Okay. Are there any questions for the chief from the council?
Council President.
Councilman Ward.
I forwarded to the director a copy of a request for proposals, and it sounds like you're describing the fact that the Flock people have taken advantage of their opportunity to provide something for free temporarily. And it sounds like seven communities in the state are going to acquire a long-term contract for a service or product without going to bid. And the claim of the sole source is simply that they are the sole manufacturer and developer of the Flock Safety ALPR camera. Okay, I don't know who else would have made it, but there are other companies out there that do the same thing. And I don't want you necessarily- And I don't want you necessarily to be using a company that is not feeding off the same databases Flock and if, but I don't understand why it is that everybody in the state, though we're bound by bid requirements and requests for proposals, um, a matter of fact, I'm looking at a screen right now where the, the state of Tennessee went to bid for such a system. And here's the RFP for it. I have a problem with just buying something without putting it out to find out who the competition is and what they offer to satisfy the needs of the community. And I don't really consider their description of them being a sole source as a sole source, frankly. That's not what a sole source is. A sole source, obviously, yes, Mack Truck is the sole source available for Mack Trucks, but not for trucks. Flock is the sole source for the Flock system for ALPR cameras, but they're not the sole provider for that service that goes with the system or the equipment. I also see that in, in my search, there's at least another dozen location locales that have gone out to bid. So I don't necessarily have a problem with what you present, and I don't dispute that they may likely be the best choice. What I have a problem with is simply signing an agreement to acquire a service without looking in the market to see who's out there just because somebody came in and said, here, try mine for free. And I'm sure you're going to like it, so I'm sure you'll buy it, even though there's somebody else out there that might be doing the same thing. That's what I have a problem with. So I just thought I'd put that out there as we begin this discussion.
Thank you, Councilman Ward. Any other comments from the council?
May I, may I comment to that?
Please, yes.
Yeah, well, I wish Flock was here because they're going to, they're going to definitely disagree with your description of their product. Uh, if you talk to them, uh, there are things, this is not just simply a license plate reader. If you look at their technology, their technology has vehicle descri, does vehicle descriptions that if you break down the patented vehicle fingerprint technology and that, and you go item per item in their, their sole, uh, that Flock Safety, why they consider them a sole source. Uh, I, I mean, I, I believe from what I'm seeing, I have looked around, I mean, not going out and got bids, but I'm not aware of any technology out there that's anywhere near as inexpensive as this. And does what this does. And just for the simple fact that wouldn't make sense to get something else if 70 other cameras are going up in the, in the state.
Well, and, but that, see, here's my, that's my problem with this, is Flock has inserted themselves into all these communities by offering things for free. And then once they're in, it's like, well, of course everyone's going to use it because the other guy's using it. And we don't want to be in, using something that the other guy's not using, so let's all use it. So maybe the state purchasing office would say some, why didn't the state go to bid for this and let the state police coordinate it? And then we could all just ride the bid and we'd all be home free. But they did it a different way. They did it the less open way. Because they didn't communicate with the council or the people who appropriate money, they contacted you. And they contacted other police departments. They didn't contact city officials and say, I have an idea I'd like to present to you. They said, here, police department, try this for free and we'll show everybody how great it is and you'll buy it. Um, and again, it's, it's not, I don't dispute that they do the job and they may have proprietary softwares and, and capabilities that, that may be unique to them. I just, I just don't know what else, what else is out there, except that I can see ALR, ALPR systems, and I haven't read through all of the RFPs to see what is expected of them or what is, um, what is intended for them to be used for. I'm just going by the fact that when you put in ALPR, uh, police camera systems and do a search, a whole host of communities across the country come up with RFPs. So I, yeah, they may be the best. I'm not disputing that. Matter of fact, the community I sent you the RFP on, they awarded a bid to Flock. But it, they did get five, five bids. They didn't get just Flock. So clearly, it's not that unique. It may be unique for some of its features, but it's not unique for ALPR camera systems and whatever it is they, they do. So I'm glad that you've had a chance to look at it, and I look forward to utilizing a system such as that because it sounds like it's beneficial. And as you say, it's, it's an enhancement to our ability to do the job without having to have more staff on duty to be able to identify these things or look out for them. It's the same thing as what the council president objects to with speed cameras. Many people object to speed cameras, but the fact is, the only other alternative is to put a car out there with a human being. And that costs money. Cameras don't. Not as much anyway. So this is another opportunity to, or an opportunity to do something. And as long as the systems are sufficient that individual liberties aren't compromised because of leakage of information or carried over information or renegade employees utilizing information improperly, then we're probably okay with it. And I know that it says that they purge the data every 30 days. So as long as we're sure there's nothing hanging around for somebody to get in trouble with, it, it could be a very beneficial tool. And I don't object to it. I just have a problem with the method by which we're going about acquiring it, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President.
Councilman Conoyer.
Look, to Council Ward's point, I guess I, I'm not sure why we wouldn't go out to RFP and, um, again, I'll look to the solicitor here. I, I thought we always reserve the right to make a decision in an RFP. It's not just, obviously, it's not just price. So, uh, we issue an RFP, we have certain criteria. If, if Flock, and I have no reason to believe they're not, but if Flock is truly the best one and provides all the bells and whistles we're looking for and other intangible, um, reasons, um, they can be selected. But I still think it makes sense. I'm not sure why we wouldn't go out to an RFP to at least get some prices and to get some level of comfort. And again, if, if Flock is what's advertised, it's probably, you know, a foregone conclusion, but we still go through the process.
That's true, Councilman. If you're looking at me, uh, the charter says that we don't have to pick the lowest bidder.
Right. But it also says for something of this, of this size, we have to go out to RFP.
Yeah.
In excess of, I mean, it's almost, we, I hear what the chief is saying and I, I, I get where he's coming from, but his, well, we are kind of boxed in by the charter that we kind of, we do have to go out to an RFP for anything over $5,000.
Anything over $5,000.
Yeah. I don't want to belabor it in, 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 um, have this go, go longer than necessary, but if they're willing to work with us and they're eager for us to sign up, um, and they're as good as they say, you know, I don't know how long it takes to put together an RFP, get it out, get the responses, but I can't imagine it's more than, you know.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
So, uh, just in defense of the chief, and I know I don't have to defend him.
Oh, no, no, no.
But, you know, we get solicit, solicitations all the time for all types of technology. He is like, no, 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 no.
Yeah.
But, um, just as far as the RFP, if we could do something under $5,000 to keep these, these, uh, systems going and then go to RFP, maybe an eight-month program or, or what have you, um, I can't see them having take, having take down these cameras and then, you know, reinstall them, um, so.
I'm just asking them to give us another four or five weeks to do the, to go through the process, but, um, that's, I mean, obviously that's up to them. I wouldn't, if there's a creative way of, of, of doing something on interim basis, uh, so that it gives us the time and space necessary to do the RFP, I'm, I'm all ears, but, and again, you know, as he said, you don't have to defend the chief. I know exactly where he's coming from. I don't disagree with anything he has said, except that we do have this provision that requires us to go out to RFP. And I don't know how to get around that.
So what about, no, no, I just want to add to, there's 13 cameras, they're 2,500 a, a camera. So it's roughly, what, 27, 2,800 a month? Could we do a one-month payment to keep the, everything as it is, but then give us a month to do the RFP?
I can certainly try. They've been extremely, it, it's just, I'm kind of taken back because they have not had this problem in any other community, uh, you know, and I'm sure all the other communities, including the state, has, has, has a purchase, uh, agreement with this. When it's sole technology or sole source technology, it's not, it's not uncommon not to not go out to bid, not to not go out to bid. If no one else has the technology and that's their claim, and they would have been more than happy to, to explain, they're, they're in 1,400, they're in 1,400 cities. Some of them, I'm sure they have, you know, maybe gone out to bid, but they've won, but, uh, for a number of reasons. They've just been very good with us. Like I said, the pilot program ended, uh, in November. They, they said, no, we'll keep it up, we'll keep it up and running. There's 13 cameras that are in place right now that are up and, that are up and running. They were effective over this weekend, right now. Uh, and if, if, like the Director said, I get sales pitches all the time. So it's not someone coming in saying, hey, you know, this is a good deal for you and a backdoor, a backdoor way, backdoor way in. No. We're the sole, we're the sole technology of this. This is state-of-the-art. No one else has this. No one else has the gunshot thing. So when you put out license plate readers, there's been license plate readers since, around since back in the 1980s that, that are quote, license plate readers. This system is a lot more, is a lot more than that. Just the software to be able to retrieve it, the search value to, to be able to do the investigative stuff with it. None of these other companies have that. That's why they're the sole, that's why they're a sole source. So, I mean, if we go out to bid, in a lot of ways, I just feel, to be honest with you, I'm wasting my time because I know that nobody has this technology.
So between Director Chamberlain and, and Solicitor DeSimone, how do we proceed financially and how do we proceed legally?
Well, I mean, legally, um, I, I understand what the chief is saying and I, uh, you know, I feel for what he's saying, but unfortunately, the charter, every, every, Eddie, every city and town has their own charter, chief. Our charter is, uh, pretty specific. Any purchase over 5,000 has to go out to competitive bid. So we don't really have a, we don't really have a choice. We, we never, uh, we never don't do that.
I think we do.
Well, I don't know of it. If we do, I don't know.
No, Chris, do it? On some lines? No?
Well, there's a-
If it's sole.
Right. There's a couple of vendors that they consider sole source, that if a director writes a letter and says it's a sole source vendor, but-
Who makes the determination that it's sole source?
The director making the purchase.
Director of what?
Whatever director, um, that the director that's making the purchase.
Oh, and the ci, the city director?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know if you meant the director for the company.
Oh, no. No, no.
Okay.
But they're few and far between, so.
Well, listen, we don't have anything on the agenda tonight to vote on.
Yeah, there's no vote.
So can, chief, can you talk to them, see what, what they've got to say? And Solicitor, if, um, if, it's got to come back to us either way, especially if, um, we're looking to do interim financing for, um, you know, to get to the, to the budget that's coming up. Can you try and come to some resolution? If we have to go to RFP, then, um, Director Chamberlain, if you can facilitate an RFP and, you know, they're probably going to win based on what Councilman Ward has said and based on the exclusivity that you've identified. It sounds like they're going to win the bid anyways, but I think that it, it, um, might be practical to go through that. The one thing that I would like to say, uh, on the record, and it's, it's, I got, we got kind of off, but, um, I was not supportive of this at all in the beginning. I, I made it clear that I didn't believe in, um, plate readers in the city. But I did think it was more of a traffic type of plate reading informa, or, you know, um, speed cameras, uh, traffic, you know, uh, stoplight cameras and stuff. I still am adamantly opposed to that type of, uh, traffic law enforcement, but this clearly is something different in nature. So, uh, I have grown to accept it. Um, and I think it, the, it obviously seems like the good far outweighs any, any problems. But I want it to be clear right now that I still do not support traffic cameras of any sort. So, uh, I hope you don't come back with that.
That won't happen.
Thank you, thank you. So, um, can the three or four of you discuss this and then, um, let's get to a good place? Either way, we've got to act on it. Not tonight. All right? All set? Any other comments, questions for the chief before we let him go? Chief, I'm going to ask that you stay for one more minute. And then I'll-
Dismiss me.
Dismiss you, yes.
21 P 24, request of Council President Gendron to address the following item. One, to wish my colleagues and the general public a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
And chief, that is why I wanted you to stay. I, I just wanted to officially and formally acknowledge, this has been, for many people, a very difficult year. With Christmas here, it's, it's a good time to reflect on the good that we've gone through and hope to get away from the bad that we've, we've lived through for the last, uh, since Mar, March of 2020. It's, it's been a miserable time for everybody. But Christmas is a good time to hope for positive things going forward, and I wanted it on the agenda to make sure that, uh, it was able to be spoken about as freely as we wanted to and to wish everybody happy holidays. So Solicitor, Directors, Chiefs, Mayor, everybody, um, my counselors that I sit with weekly, each one of you, including the two that are not here this evening. And most importantly, the general public, our constituents, the residents of the city of One Socket, my family, our families, thank you for putting up with what we've gone through. Thank you for understanding, uh, what this nation has gone through. And let's collectively hope that things get better real soon. Because as we think things are moving in the right direction, um, we end up starting a new mask mandate today, which makes you wonder where we really are going. But the one true thing is that this is the holiday season and it's a positive thing that we can all look back on, look at, look at and reflect on, um, for a positive outcome. So thank you, thank you to everybody, um, for your friendship throughout the years. I have one other thing. Councilwoman Sierra asked me to mention on her behalf that New Beginnings has a annual raffle for a holiday basket. And, um, they are looking to, uh, just advertise that that is going on. It's a, it's a beautiful holiday basket and it's available and it supports New Beginnings during this, um, special holiday time. So remember them. And at this point, it is on the agenda, so if any of my colleagues would like to, uh, wish anybody well wishes, Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, um, any, anything else, it's open. And if not, we'll move on with the regular agenda.
Is there anyone else on the planet?
Anyone else that you can think of?
You've cut it off.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everybody.
Chief, you're free to go.
Thank you, everyone. Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas. Yes, Director D'Agostino, we had pulled off, um, 21 CO 107. So if we could have a motion to receive 21 CO 107?
So moved, Jim.
Motion made by Councilman Conoyer, seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments? Director D'Agostino?
Yeah, just, uh, very quickly, I just wanted to acknowledge that, uh, this being the final meeting of, uh, 2021, we finished the year with the lowest odor complaints on record. So, um, I'm happy to pass that information along. And I know there are some out there that would say, you know, that's, that's not factual, but it is. So, um, the odor lo, out, the odor hotline is working. It's up and available. And if you go to the city website, um, the number is right there. But, and I attribute that to, uh, you know, uh, better management at the plant by the individuals that run the plants. And, uh, they've been doing a nice job and cracking down more on, uh, the trucks that come in and leave, trying to make sure that the, they're deodorized and such, so. that come in and leave, trying to make sure that they're deodorized and such, so. 14 complaints for the entire year. Like I say, the second lowest is 22, and that was in 2014. So, you know, I'm happy with that. We're headed in the right direction, but there's, as I said, it will never be odor-free, no matter who sits here. I promise you that. So, it's only one truck away from a complaint, so. And if anybody, any questions on that?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to, you and I spoke before the meeting?
Yes.
And I told you that I had received a question regarding the odor hotline?
Yep.
There was a small glitch, you said, but it's been repaired, and that odor hotline is back up and running?
Well, that number is no longer available, the 765 number?
Oh, it's not? Okay.
No. It is 401-648-7780, and it is on the city website, if you go to, you know, complaint, report a complaint, or whatever, that is the number. And I dialed it, you know, before I came here.
Okay.
And I spoke to a, you know, a person that answers it live, so...
So, can we have somebody take down that odor hotline link that's out there?
Okay, well, it's, like I say, it's not on the city website, the other 65, 765 number. So, if I go right now to the city website, odor complaint information, odor hotline, it is in fact the number I just gave you, so...
Okay. All right, so it's, the odor hotline is clear, I mean, this number is working?
It's working.
Okay.
I just spoke to someone, as I say, as I drove to this meeting.
Very good.
Just to make sure.
Thank you for the clarification.
But, no problem. So, Merry Christmas, everyone in that area.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Any questions for Director D'Agostino? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And 21 CO 107 is received as presented and placed on file. Moving on to unfinished business of previous meetings.
21077, authorizing entering into a contract, an agreement with Election Data Services, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Ward?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Canoia. Comments? Hearing none, roll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Suce?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes. And 21077 is approved, second passage, five to zero. Moving on to new business.
21078, provide an American Rescue Plan Act funding to secure 10 rooms at the Wansocket Motor Inn for the period of 1 January 2022 to 31 March 2022.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia, seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments?
Yes, Council President?
Councilwoman Sierra?
I would like to say something on this subject. Most of you are at the special meeting that we had last week, and understand where I stand on this matter. I do see it as a kind of an expensive Band-Aid, and I do indeed wish that the funding would go to something more permanent. However, I'm at the point also, like many of you, that I feel something is better than nothing, and I am certainly mindful of the effort put in by my peers. I certainly wouldn't want to cast a shadow on a positive, good idea. But I will support this, because as I say, something is better than nothing. However, I would like us to collectively maybe speak about something more permanent, and not a temporary Band-Aid fix. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Suce?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes. And 21078 is approved, five to zero.
21079, provide an American Rescue Plan Act funding to New Beginnings, Inc.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia, seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments?
Yes, Council President?
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Suce?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes. And 21079 is approved, five to zero.
21080, transferring funds from capital funds to police department.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia, seconded by Councilman Suce?
Sir.
Comments? Just so that the public knows, this is in regards to a work session we had with the chief and the Public Safety Director regarding necessary improvements at the police station, and this is transferring the funds to do that, which will be handled at a resolution later in the meeting. Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Suce?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes. And 21080 is approved, five to zero.
21 R. 113, authorizing the cancellation of certain taxes.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Ward?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Canoia. Comments?
Council President?
Councilman Ward?
This debatement total announced at $272.35 for two items.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And 21 R. 113 is approved, five to zero.
21 R. 114, establish in the city council meeting dates and agenda deadlines for calendar year 2022.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia, seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And 21 R. 114 is approved, five to zero.
21 R. 115, a resolution to authorize the City of Wansocket to approve an LED streetlight equipment pricing estimate from Prism, and direct them to purchase LED streetlights and Verizon controls.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Sierra, seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments? I have one question. In this Administrator Luba, just had a question regarding, this talks about the purchase of equipment. Is this also the labor for installation?
It is not. It's just the purchase of equipment.
Just the purchase?
Excuse me. It was approximately a 12-week lead time, so we'd kind of like to get your equipment order in first. You will be getting future resolutions on the installation and, on the installation.
And what is that anticipated to be?
$60 a unit, pretty much.
So, are these numbers that we anticipated when this began?
It'll probably end at about $1,001, which we anticipated.
It seems greater than I thought, but...
I mean, six, there's about 3,000 lights, times $60, that's $180,000 neighborhood. And this is just the city's streetlights. There's roughly 600 state lights, state, lights on state streets. But right now, there's not clear guidance as to what type of lights the states are looking for, so we're going to wait to the end to put those up.
When we get to that, though, the state is picking up that cost, correct?
No. We buy the lights, and then afterwards, the state picks up the maintenance and the cost.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Council President?
Councilman Ward?
Just one other comment, because so much was made of it before, and it's just, there was bad information out there about us buying decorative lighting. The fact is, the decorative lighting that we have to buy is because the light fixtures that are decorative lighting are owned by the city?
Yes.
After this is over. And in order to take care of any repairs that may be necessary, if someone drives into one, or it gets knocked down by weather, or whatever reason it gets damaged, we have to have an inventory for the company that's doing our maintenance contract, in order for them to be able to go grab up a unit of inventory and go out and replace the fixture as soon as possible. That's really what that decorative lighting purchase is, right? It's just an inventory supply?
And some lights will probably be changed out, because they're not...
Okay. But it'll be basically, we're not buying them wholesale to set up new decorative lighting in other places, it's simply, we're making sure we have enough inventory and getting some commonality among the units that are currently owned.
I mean, the chief chartrow is the expert on the decorative lighting, so if you have any questions regarding that...
The only question I do have, because it's driven me crazy, since I asked the question and got the most convoluted answer from a city official who shall remain unnamed, but right now on Hamlet Avenue, we have decorative lighting. We also have regular streetlights on the pole, and they're both working. And my question is, clearly, they're not both necessary. And so, on Hamlet Avenue, where we have both, and you want decorative lighting, when they take down the old fixture, are we going to not replace those units because we have lights down at the street level?
I'll have to ask.
Please do. Because I was, I don't even want to tell you what the answer I got was when I asked the question, but it was the most ridiculous thing. It made me call the State Department of Transportation, and when I did, I almost sent the guy into convulsions. He was laughing so hard at me for even asking the question, and yet it was the answer a city official gave me. So, I...
Go ahead, John. Tell him what he said. Go ahead.
Well, it was something about a requirement for a certain amount of lumens being used to hit the street, blah, blah, blah. And the guy laughed, because he said, "You're not even required to have a streetlight." So, I don't know what he's talking about. But it was, it made for a good joke. But I'm just, it drives me crazy, and it's had, I've had people ask me, "Why do you have two sets of streetlights on Hamlet Avenue?"
I'll mention Hamlet Avenue.
Please do. Thank you.
Can I comment on that as well?
Director D'Agostino?
Yeah, I don't know who said that, but it sounds convoluted, but having, you know, you brought this to our attention, I would like to do like some type of a, just to see, like maybe just have one set of lights on for a week, and one off, you know what I'm saying? Before we make that decision to eliminate a set decorative or the street...
I only say that because Main Street only has the decorative lighting.
Yeah, yeah.
West Street Bridge only has the decorative lighting. But Hamlet Avenue has both.
Yeah, and I do like the lighting on Hamlet Avenue. I have to be honest, you know, it's very well lit. I know it's probably a little more expensive, but it's very nice when you're plowing and going to and from throughout the city, so it might be the way to go. But I would like to conduct some type of an experiment.
You can always buy a higher level of lumens in the fixture that you put in, in decorative fixture, too.
Could be. I mean, that could be a solution, but, yeah, definitely.
As long as we all remember that there is no state mandate to actually light our streets.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All set? Administrator Luba?
Yes.
Last time I called you director, and I've been ridiculed by...
Is Administrator higher, or is it lower?
No, it's got to be lower, because the directors, they told me I was wrong, and I can't ever do that again, so. Okay. No other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And 21 R. 115 is approved, five to zero. Have a nice vacation.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Paul.
21 R. 116, approving the location of 1500 Diamond Hill Road, Lot 29, on assessors plot 46, to operate a medical marijuana compassion center.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia, seconded by Councilman Suce. Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And 21 R. 116 is approved, five to zero.
21 R. 117, authorizing the City of Wansocket to enter into a contract with Strategic Solution Team LLC for police cell block toilet and sink replacement, bid number 6045.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilman Canoia. Comments? As I said earlier, this is the contract that relates to the transfer that we did earlier in the meeting. If there's no other comments, all those in favor?[1763.54]